I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to start tonight with a couple of hearings, and the first one is Spicer Marketplace, and we have a letter in our packet from the attorney, Mr. Kamali.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the council. I have a letter respectfully requesting to withdraw the previous tax amendment that came before this council and was recommended to be approved by the planning board based on the last public hearing and their concerns. I'd ask that be removed without prejudice. And the next item you have on your agenda is a request for a zoning, it should read map amendment and comprehensive map amendment, and inadvertently says tax amendment. We would ask that the council accept that application order to advertisement and refer it to the planning board to review.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the withdrawn portion of the initial tax amendment by Mr. Kamali and his applicant, the Marons.
Without prejudice?
Without prejudice, and that we proceed with the zoning change as necessary.
We'll send it to the planning board for opinion.
Second. Okay. All right, so we'll, I think you had a little trouble with your motion there, but...
Just add to it for setting a hearing date.
And to set a hearing date.
Okay, that's fine. And do a second then?
Second.
Okay, all right, fine. Is there any discussion on the matter? Okay, all in favor? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, thank you, members of the council.
The only thing we need to do now is set that hearing date. Lisa, two meetings from now, or?
It's two, it has to be advertised three times.
Oh, yeah, right. A little different, yeah.
It's too soon to place it on for October 17th, so I believe the 7th is probably the date we target.
November 7th?
Yes.
And that would give the planning board time in between?
I'm guessing that that would be the case. It's already been sent to the planning board. It's on their agenda for once.
Oh, okay, fine, all right, okay. So it's November, what did you say?
7th.
7th, okay. All right, fine. All right, thank you very much. Next up, we have a zoning ordinance amendment for property owned by, or I should say, for amendment request filed by Peter Legnos, LBI Incorporated of Groton, Connecticut, and it is the property at 50 Chase Hill Road, Ashway, and they're looking for a change in their zoning. Mr. Nardone, you want to, do you want to come right up?
Yes.
Okay.
One of the things I just want to mention to the council before Mr. Nardone starts his presentation is that the application does not currently contain the signatures of the current owners of the property, and I discussed that with Mr. Nardone, and he's going to make certain that is taken care of before the next meeting on the...
I'm sorry, Ms. Clay, I need to go last.
From where?
The very last people you said.
I said he's going to make sure it's taken care of before your next meeting.
This is the please. We just changed our manufacturing special to manufacturing.
Yeah, right.
So the asset is still...
Right, yes. Excuse me, perhaps the map could go way over there. Might be easier for everyone to get a look at. That's good.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the council. William Nardone, and I'm here this evening representing the applicant, Peter Legnos, and LBI, Inc., and I can also confirm the conversation that the town solicitor just reiterated to you, that I'm here on behalf of the owner as well. They have, in our haste to get the application to you, it was not signed by them, but we do have a signed purchase and sale agreement with that as a contingency, and will provide the owner's signature either specific from the owner or through their counsel prior to your next meeting, just as a matter of housekeeping. The application before you is for an amendment to the zoning map with respect to property which is currently owned by Shamrock Associates, LLC. It's located at 50 Chase Hill Road and is the site of the former Imperial Wallpaper and most recently Garrity Industries Manufacturing Companies. The application references two properties, Lot 13 on Platte 1 and Lot 2 on Platte 2. Those are the properties that are owned by Shamrock. The only parcel that is the subject of our request is a portion of Map 1, Lot 13, and it's shown, outlined on the plan, it's highlighted in the yellow. It's approximately 34 acres. That parcel, that the portion of that parcel, is the piece that is currently zoned manufacturing special, and we're asking that it be rezoned to manufacturing. The reason that we're here asking for that is that there is, I guess it was a little over 20 years ago when that property was designated as manufacturing special, there was a requirement that in the event of a change of use, that the applicant had to apply to the council for approval of that change of use. Well, there's no mechanism to allow an applicant to come to you and just ask for a change of use, so we're requesting a zone change which would permit our uses. The proposed use is for manufacturing, research, and development, in general terms, by LBI Incorporated. LBI is a company that's located currently in Groton, Connecticut. It's been in business for approximately 40 years. The president, Peter Legnos, is here with me this evening and will address the council with respect to the operation, but in general, it's a company that provides high-level engineering and prototype development services to the Office of Naval Research. Those services include systems engineering, mechanical design, fabrication, testing, evaluation, et cetera, on U.S. Department of Defense projects. And Peter will expound on that a little bit more. They currently have about 28 employees in Groton and hope to increase that to approximately 40 upon shortly after relocation. Now, to the zone change itself, the manufacturing special allows for only two uses at that site, and those are the two prior uses, the wallpaper business and the flashlights. The structure itself, which contained those uses, is approximately 170,000 square feet. As I indicated, the area of the land in question is 34 acres. We are proposing no changes to the structure other than roof repairs and cosmetic things, and no changes whatsoever to the site. We do have an opportunity with the remaining land, which is zoned residential, to discuss with the Conservation Commission and the planning board, and it's our intention to do so, with respect to the potential for some public access and open space uses, and we'll leave that as a discussion point for future, but we did want to make the council aware of that as one of Mr. Legnos' intentions for that property, because he will not have a use for the remaining 60 or 70 acres, significant size of that parcel. The use tables that are currently in existence were not in existence at the time of the designation for manufacturing special, and that was one of the reasons for the designation, because that gave the then council some protection, if you will, some additional authority as to what uses could or could not occupy the property. Now that you have the expanded use table, there are a number of different uses that obviously are permitted. The protection that is afforded to the council and the town as a whole is in the fact that this property is located in the primary aquifer area under the Aquifer Protection Overlay District. So in addition to the requirement for the property to be zoned manufacturing, there is a requirement that we apply for an aquifer protection permit specific to the uses which we would designate from your use tables. We have started that process, in fact, we have applied to the zoning board, we requested several waivers, those waivers have been granted, and the hearing on the aquifer protection permit has been scheduled for October 20th. So we're well along in that process as well. We've prepared a draft ordinance, which I submitted earlier this evening to the town solicitor. Full review. And I'd like to, I'd like to make that a part of the record. We also appeared before the planning board on a referral basis from the council for the, to receive a recommendation from the planning board to the council. They submitted a memo to the council, which was dated September 14th, in which they indicate that the board moved to recommend to the town council that the zoning of Platte 1, Lot 13 be changed from manufacturing special to manufacturing. The memo doesn't indicate, but that was a unanimous vote of the planning board. We are also in receipt of a letter from John Riendo, Business Development Manager, from the, for the Rhode Island Economic Development Corporation, dated September 30, 2011, it was addressed to the town manager. This letter is to support the application of LBI Incorporated, currently residing in Groton, Connecticut, and seeking to purchase the existing building and property located at 50 Chase Hill Road in Ashway. The Rhode Island Economic Development Corporation has been working with LBI to cite them in Hopkinton as part of a relocation strategy that will add new jobs and economic activity to the town of Hopkinton and the state. LBI is a research and development company providing high-level engineering and prototype development services to the Office of Naval Research. The company employs high-skilled and high-wage individuals ranging from engineers to metal and composite fabrication on U.S. Department of Defense projects. I have personally visited the company's operations in Groton, where they have been located for the past 39 years, and witnessed their methods of design, engineering, and prototype development for unmanned undersea vehicles and other special-purpose buoys for the U.S. Department of Defense. I found their management protocols and practices very conducive for the health of their employees and local surroundings, recognize that their current location is situated within the watershed of the city's main drinking water supply source, and to the best of my knowledge, the company has never had an environmental accident. As with similar defense-related projects RIEDC has been involved with, we can only suggest that the town council perform their due diligence with a careful review of all the facts relating to LBI and their proposed operations for 50 Chase Hill Road. We are optimistic that the council will find what we have experienced with the company, that they are owned and managed by a person who cares for his employees, his customers, and is a good steward of the environment. Present with me this evening are some witnesses and consultants that may or may not need to speak to you, but as I said, Peter Legnos, the president of the company, who will address you shortly, Joseph Lombardo, our planning consultant, will address the consistency with the comprehensive plan, and Michael Lenahan, the real estate appraiser, to discuss the effect, if any, on adjacent properties. Also present is Pat Lafayette, who is the engineer on the project, and James Bernardo, the surveyor on the project. If there are any specific questions for those two, we can address those toward the end of the presentation. As I indicated, there are no proposed changes to the site at all, but they're here to answer any questions that you may have. At this point, if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them. If not, I'd ask Peter Legnos to come and tell you a little bit about his company.
Do you have any questions, Mr. Nardone?
I had one quick one.
Go ahead.
Mr. Nardone, on, based on the letter we got from the building official, Brad Ward, it looks like use category 305 and 627 is already permitted in manufacturing, so I don't know if that seems redundant, but does that need to be included, I guess?
Actually, all of the use categories that we have referenced, and we've actually included one more, are permitted in the manufacturing zone. However, each of them requires an aquifer protection permit. So if the council sees fit to rezone this property to manufacturing, the uses that we are proposing will be permitted, subject to the zoning board granting aquifer protection permits.
Do you understand?
So that's the, that's the second level of protection that the town and council has.
The uses that he listed are already permitted in manufacturing, so he just listed them out for you, that's all.
And there is, there is one more that was not included on the application. It was, I believe it was 341, which was, from memory, I believe it's metal fabrication. That's also a permitted use in that zone, subject to an aquifer protection permit. Those uses are some of the uses in consult with the zoning official that we determined would fit the operation of this company. The company will not occupy the entire building, and at some point will be leasing some of it to other occupants, and obviously, whatever occupant were to go there would be first subject to Mr. Legnos' scrutiny, and then subject to its own separate aquifer protection permit if it were not one of those specific uses for which we have applied. And we're, we're well aware of that, that process.
Scott, you have a question?
Yes, I got two questions, and I just want to make sure I get this. I know at the last meeting we waived a, we waived the traffic study. Do you anticipate any difference in traffic from the previous uses? I mean, trucks that go into the facility?
We anticipate, and Mr. Legnos can address this more specifically, but we anticipate less, there'll be fewer employees there, and the delivery schedule with respect to components and things that Peter will be having delivered will be, I would believe, much less intense than the delivery schedules that were in the prior uses, and he can, he can address that more specifically when he comes up, but we did have that, that discussion and represented that it would be less.
Because I know that usually, we believe the town has prohibited traffic on Old Hopkins Cemetery Road, so the access would have to be through Chase Hill Road. I mean, I'm sure it was blocked off for some reason, then there would be a problem. The other, the other questions that came to mind, it says, the history of this thing is very interesting, as you know, because it says, when this was passed many years ago, it says the change of the use each time had to come before the council. Would this change, if this council would be asked to approve, would once and for all take that off the table as far as your successors, whoever buys a property 10 or 15 years down the line or whenever? Will they have to still come to the council for a zone change, or is this going to be perpetuity until the council changes?
I'll answer that. Yes, this would convert it to manufacturing, so anyone who wanted to buy that property subsequently would be able to have any manufacturing use there. They would not have to come to you to clear it. Any permitted manufacturing use would be allowed there.
Again, with one...
They would, they would also, they would still have to go get the aquifer protection permit.
Right, right.
There's still safeguards.
In place.
In place.
And then the other question is, and I should have referred to that, but you are making a presentation to the council. The other thing that I have is, what, the presentation to the council has been, there's no changes to the site in the future. You plan to have the same buildings and everything. In the future, when you do any buildings, you're going to have to go to the building inspector for permits, so do you not see any way that the council would be involved in any expansion or maybe big expansion at the site, if whatever will come to that?
No.
In the event that we were to expand, physically expand the structure because of the zone in which it's located, we would have to go through the development plan review process before the planning board, but as far as, as council approval, it wouldn't be required.
I just thought there were relevant questions to ask. Thank you.
Certainly.
Anyone else from the council? Thank you.
Peter?
Peter Legnos, president of LBI, Inc., Groton, Connecticut, hopefully coming up here. We have, we're an R&amp;D and engineering firm, as Bill has mentioned, we've been in business for 40 years. We currently employ 28 people, about 22 of whom are going to be following us up here, and we're going to be hiring another about 17 people, hopefully from this area. Originally, we started out designing and building boats. We have a real tie to the marine industry for a very long time, both sail power and commercial craft. A lot of them have run out of Point Judith here and Watch Hill. In the last 30 years, we came slowly involved, more and more involved in engineering and R&amp;D for the government, first through electric boat and Newport News and places like that, and we've done a lot of that type of work. Most of the work we do now is developed through research grants, and most of them are primary grants to us through the Office of Naval Research. We've also done other work for NOAA, and we have developed some Arctic and Antarctic sensing platforms that, that we developed on an earlier grant, and that's the only thing that we're truly manufacturing at the site, is Arctic sensing buoys, and, but some of the other products that we are producing now may be bid on and built at that site as well, like underwater vehicles and that sort of thing. We are planning to, if this all goes through, to make about $1.1 to $1.2 million improvements to the building in the process of moving in and over the first year, replacing the roof on the old section, bringing it up to code, which I think is a very good thing because that will give that building a whole new lease on life and another 30 or 40 years of good operation at a high level. Let's see. We have, we propose to have our engineering department prototyping area, electronic shop, metal shop, and composite shop in the older west side of the building. That's the one we're going to renovate. We're going to also put in radiant floor heat in the building, which is far more efficient. The other half of the building, we intended, we want to get a long-term lease for warehousing there, that would, because our, we have to, we have to be careful who is in the same building with us, because we have many concerns for the government, that we just can't rent it to anybody or a lot of small tenants. It's not, not a possibility. With regard to the, you know, we really want to use the 34 acres, and the rest of the space, there's a lot of wetlands, there's a lot of access to the river from that, from the Pocket Tuck River, and I'm, you know, there's no reason why that shouldn't be part of a conservation or open space plan with the town, and I'm very happy to sit down and talk about that and how that can be, you know, addressed, because it, you know, it's the best use for it, and we, you know, it's not, it's not a money thing, it just makes sense, so. I guess that's pretty much it. If anybody has any questions about what we do or whatever, open it up.
Barbara? I wondered if you're going to be also having, because you're doing the grants, the research grants, the Arctic and Antarctic, are you also, or do you also have a tie-in to URI? Because they have that oceanographic, they have the Woods Hole. Is there a tie, or is there, or are you anticipating a tie-in with URI?
Yeah, we, yeah, we actually, one of my key guys who's developing, we're doing an underwater glider right now, and he's running that grant. He's an ocean engineer for URI, and...
I know, I want one of those.
Pardon?
I want one of those. They're really cute.
They are cute. Anyway, and we have actually just sent a letter to the, to the ocean engineering department. We need to recruit two or three more engineers right now, so we need them kind of ASAP if we can get them. We last week made a presentation to the Admiral, the outgoing Chief of Naval Research, and the incoming Chief of Naval Research, and they've sort of accelerated our schedule a little bit. They liked things yesterday, so...
I think that sounds like that would be a really good use of employees when you can possibly hire from URI and locally.
We are really happy about that, because they have a great ocean engineering department. I actually traveled to Virginia Beach and recruited some guys from the, they were at the robo-boat competition, which is an unmanned surface craft competition in June, and we met one of those guys, he came down to see us a couple weeks ago, and so we're, it's a slow process, but Yukon doesn't have any of that stuff. We are, we have a, we have a marine science department, but it's really more biology. We're, we're more on the physical science side.
Thank you. Maybe questions later when we open it up. Thank you.
I'd like to call Joe Lombardo, please.
Lisa, or, could you, could you swear in, Joe, please, Mr. Nardone? Or do you want Lisa to do it?
I can, Lisa. Probably official if Lisa does it.
Okay, Lisa, all right.
Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear in the question when you were brought today? Is there a little quick thing up your throat?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Name is Joseph, last name Lombardo, L-O-M-B-A-R-D-O.
Mr. Lombardo, can you just briefly state your background and qualifications to the council, please?
Yes, I'm a lane use planning consultant. My background is I have a master's degree in community planning from University of Rhode Island. I've worked several positions in local government, including the town of Hopkinton as a town planner, and more recently, as I said, the last 10 years, planning consulting work for a variety of clients.
And you're familiar with the application before the council this evening?
Yes, I am.
And you're familiar with the specific site in question?
Yes, I am very familiar with that site.
And we've asked you to prepare a memorandum in respect to its consistency with the comprehensive plan?
Yes, I did.
Could you explain to the council your findings with respect to that charge, please?
Okay. Vivi, members of the council, it's a pleasure to be here this evening. I'm actually quite excited to hear of a proposal like this, particularly of a building that's, that's not being currently utilized. So what I'm passing out for you is I was asked to take a look at the project with respect to its compliance with the comprehensive plan. I know that you've gotten a favorable recommendation from the planning board as well with regards to that fact. Just a bit of the, again, to reiterate the overview, this site is located on Chase Hill Road, and it is currently zoned manufacturing special. We're going to talk about that in a minute. A portion of that site, of the, of the entire lot, is zoned manufacturing special, which is 34 acres. acres. The site is really surrounded primarily by developed and undeveloped residential areas. But this site has been in an industrial category for quite some time, as you all know, first by Imperial Wallpaper for many years, and then the Flashlight Company. Well, first of all, I'm going to look at the, when you look at the zoning considerations on page two of my memorandum, this manufacturing special does allow for those previous uses, as Mr. Nardum pointed out, but it does not allow for any of the other manufacturing uses, which we now have in our expanded use table here in the town of Hopkinton. It also lies within the Aquafor protection zone, and it's a primary zone, so certain uses require a permit from the zoning board, as you know. So just a little, a little bit more background on this manufacturing special. I think Sylvia would probably remember this as well, but at the time of the adoption of the new zoning ordinance in the early 90s, we went back and looked at all of the previous zone changes that the town council had granted, and a lot of them had a variety of conditions placed on them. And so this section that I'm quoting here in the bold in the middle of my memorandum is actually right out of the ordinance. But it's really what it's saying is that anything that the council imposed as far as limitations, conditions, or restrictions were basically being reauthorized and re-granted to all of those applicants. So that when the council adopted the new zoning ordinance, it wasn't going to lose, nobody was going to lose what they had, nor was the town losing any of its control over those sites that they wanted to have at the time. So that's the purpose of those special districts, and it's not just manufacturing, but it went across the whole zoning table. So when we look at the proposed use, there's five uses that the zoning official in consultation with the owner looked at and decided these would be the activities taking place. They all are listed, and they all have code numbers, code 305 miscellaneous plastics, 465 general warehousing, et cetera. So you can see that these are the uses that they intend to have there. But as they pointed out, they're only really using half of this building and want to be able to utilize the other half for probably one, maybe two major tenants. So again, it's for the long term, it's for flexibility for the site. Some of those uses in the manufacturing zone may also require a special use permit from the zoning board. So there's adequate levels of protection and review by the town and also state agencies with regards to the future. When we look at the comprehensive plan specifically, on page three, I talk a little bit about the land use element. When we take a look at the land use map, the future land use map, it does indicate this site is manufacturing, and it's been so designated in both the comprehensive plan map and the zoning map. And again, when we look at that, it talks about, a little bit of text in the plan talks about a continuation of the town's manufacturing classifications. It talks about anything that has special concerns, has a special use permit, and of course, the act for protection. There's site plane review by the planning board. So the town was very, very comfortable in keeping its existing manufacturing areas intact when it adopted the comprehensive plan, and that's what you see here on page three. I cited a land use goal on top of page four, where it talks about development occurring in locations based on environmental constraints and the land being consistent with the future land use map. So again, we have a manufacturing designation on the future land use map. And of course, when we talk about manufacturing, we must look at economic development. The town has been doing quite well in the last five or six years with fostering economic development, and this is another good example. I've cited again a couple of goals and policies here. Primary of that, the goal number one is expanding the town's tax base, new and existing light industrial into the town. So whenever we have that, we have investment. You heard Peter just explain, he's going to invest into the building and the property. So we continue to add to our tax base. And lastly, it talks about providing an environment here in the community that enhances the businesses to come here. You could hear that from the letter from the state, to John Riando, that there's been activity ongoing with the state to assist them to move to Rhode Island from Connecticut. And lastly, hiring high-level, high-paying jobs, at least another 17 employees. That's really good news for the town. Some of those people might live in town already or move to town. I think that's a great, again, consistency with the comprehensive plan. I also mentioned on page five, those purposes of zoning, which we also must look at. Does this line up with the purposes of zoning? And you can see I've cited a number of them here. It talks about the orderly growth and development of the town, providing a protection for the environment. I heard about possibly having some conservation open space area there, which I think is a good idea. And also promotes the public health, safety, and welfare. So really, in summary, you know, the fact that this development is consistent with the manufacturing business use and uses that have been outlined to you, and the fact that this map amendment doesn't really alter any other manufacturing special zones in town, it doesn't affect those at all, it's just this one site, and the facts that all the required areas from a zoning perspective are met or exceeded by this development because it's intact and he's not proposing anything to change. But there's 34 acres there, so there's more than enough room for this project to exist on that site. And lastly, I do find it to be consistent with the comprehensive plan, primarily it's future land use map, goals and policies for economic development and land use. And so really, based on all of that information, it's my opinion that this application for this map amendment, this change, is in compliance with your zoning ordinance and your comprehensive plan. And I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
No, I'm all set, Joe. I've been through this with the planning board and I'm pretty well familiar with it. I think it's a great move. Hopefully everything will work out, so yeah, no questions.
Scott, do you have any questions? Thank you, Joe.
Okay, thank you.
Michael Lenihan?
Yes.
I do, yes. Michael Lenihan, L-E-N-I-H-A-N.
Mr. Lenihan, could you briefly state your background and qualifications for the council, please?
Certified real estate appraiser, attorney in the state of Rhode Island. I testified at this hearing 20 something years ago, when the resumé was done.
Do you remember that testimony?
I'll plead the fifth.
You're obviously familiar with the site and the surrounding neighborhood?
I've pretty much appraised everything from Kamoli Granite Company right up to Narragansett Electric's property and plus the stuff that Mr. Grills did a couple of years ago, residential, commercial. I've done the church, haven't done the cemetery. Everything else, pretty much, I'm interested, yes.
And based upon those appraisals, do you have an opinion with respect to the effect that this zone change may have on the neighboring properties and abiding?
I do. And I've always been concerned about vacant buildings. Vacant buildings concern me because you really don't know what effect, you know, it has. Can you measure it? No. But I can tell you this, that after, you know, almost 40 years of appraising property and selling property, that, you know, if people see a vibrant business with a commitment to wetlands, with a well-planned out thing, they just feel better about the whole thing, which leads to a stabilization of values. The building as it sits now, it really is, I testified 20 years ago, I don't think it has any effect on value, but I think it does have an effect on the neighborhood, and I think it has an effect on the overall community to, in the way the community envisions itself. So my position would be, anything that's going to get that building up and running to an acceptable level to all the various organizations and concerns, it's got to be a positive thing for the area and the town, and a positive thing for the neighborhood.
Any questions, Scott? I have a comment. When LBI decides to renovate, because I'm assuming they're renovating the building so it will go up in value, can they also follow Hopkinton's design standards, which are under our planning board, so that the renovation can follow our present design standards? The renovation, for instance, the roof.
They would have to apply for building permits for any work that they would do to the structure, roof replacement, and I'm certain that they would comply with the current standards. The planned renovations that Peter Legno referenced are obviously interior renovations to set up the inside of the structure for their own purposes.
Usually the design standards would be if you're building a new building, but especially if he's going to renovate any of the outside portions, if he could take a look at that, I would appreciate it.
We will.
Because we do have some nice, high standards on quality of roof, quality of siding, and I'd certainly like to see that done as well. Would you come up to the microphone, please?
Yeah, we intend to bring the building up to the roof and insulation to the current code, and if there's any architectural standards that go with that, it only makes sense to do that.
Thank you so much.
Well, I didn't address the traffic question, I forgot to do that. But with the traffic, we don't generate as much traffic as somebody like Garrity would do. We're much smaller in the amount of, if we were manufacturing more, it would go up. But even when we manufacture a lot, it's, they're small, more expensive things, so it's not like tons and tons of stuff coming in and out.
Thank you for answering your question. Mr. Legno?
Excuse me?
She got me here.
No, we didn't.
Lisa, how about if we swear Mr. Legno's now, that he told the truth, not that he's hiding it? Because he wasn't sworn.
I was going to ask that question.
Yeah, well, we're going to take care of that right now, Mr. Legno. You have a statement to make, Lisa?
Yes.
Do you solemnly swear that the truth, that the testimony you gave was confidential?
I do.
You covered that nicely.
Okay.
Tom?
The only thing that I ask is when you do your renovations, I don't know if you've noticed, but in, within the last year or so, we've got a new dark sky lighting. So if you change some of the lighting fixtures-
Yes, yeah.
Please take note of that.
Yeah, we already did look at some of the outside lights that we would go to the new type of fixtures.
Okay, that's very important to us to keep that glow down to-
Absolutely reasonable.
-the neighbors.
Yeah, we have that same in our current location. We changed some of that to, just because they wanted it.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
As I said, unless there are any other specific questions for us, that concludes our presentation. We obviously reserve the right to address any comments from the audience, if there may be, or any additional questions. We're happy to answer them. Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to know if there's anyone from the public who would like to speak, and just let us know what your name is for the record. Go ahead, sir.
Charles Holland, I'm at 36 Chase Hill Road. A lot of the discussion was about the Aquafor protection. It's very important, the wells that are there, ours is right near the river. I didn't hear anything about noise or air quality with your business. I don't know enough about your business. And/or the sub-tenants you might have down the road, and we just touched on that, you touched on traffic, and thank you.
Yes.
With regard to air quality, we will keep to below VOC standards for everything we do. We do that now for ventilation. As far as noise, everything is pretty much inside. We don't have any loud outside, so it's, and none of it would actually emanate from the building from a noise standpoint. Did I get, was there another part I have in the tenant? The tenant, we, we are really looking to work with a company that's looking for just warehousing space, they're looking for a 20-year lease right now, and I don't know if they're going to come through, but that type of business that would basically just be using it for storage and as a distribution, yes. And not a lot of employees. The thing is, a lot of employees bring a lot of things into a neighborhood, and we're not going to probably ever be that big in terms of employees. We'll never be like the wallpaper company or even as big as probably as Garrity. So it's, so everything's going to end up being inside, so I don't see much happening outside. We do have some test boats. They're on trailers. They're 11 meters long, which is about 36 feet, 35 feet. They're Navy ribs, like the Navy SEAL boats, which will be coming in and out from time to time, but we will keep those probably down in Watch Hill and that area. Because we have an acoustic test area that we test out in Block Island Sound, and one out south of Block Island, between Block Island and Montauk, so.
So you wouldn't be testing them in the river?
I guess we could put one in, a little one, and see how it floats.
Could you come back up to the microphone, please?
In terms of the water quality, would there be any discharges of any type of the past uses of that building down there? It's had leaching lagoons way back, you know, those are DMs in play now and all that.
You know, we don't have any intention for any, we have stormwater discharge permit where we are now, but we don't really, it's just leaching off the roof and the site, and we do tests on a regular basis. We do have a letter to the state about, they didn't say that there was any requirement for testing. We thought that was a little strange, so we're trying to, we shouldn't ask too much to make us do it. But yeah, no, we want to test water quality. We don't really use any cleaning processes or, you know, a lot of water at all, so.
That's an ISDS there, right? You'll have a few bathrooms.
Yes, we'll have bathrooms. Yeah, we'll have bathrooms and that sort of thing. Apparently what we do, it really isn't, we don't even do much washing. I mean, it's, we do some sanding, we collect dust, that kind of stuff. We have machines to do that, so. Your work.
Is there anyone else that would like to come up and speak? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Mary Lou Foley. I had an open-ended question, sort of. Would there be a public bill of materials, a BOM, that would periodically be reviewed as ECO orders or ECOs would transpire? Engineering change orders?
If we store or use different things on the site, I think we are required by our permit to record that, and what's stored there and the amounts, and that should be given also to the fire department. So in case there is a fire, that's to protect the firefighters and also pollution. You don't want to put a lot of water into something and spill it out into the environment, you know, that sort of thing. But the building is fully sprinkled, which helps in that regard. But yes, we do have to, as what we store on-site changes, we're required to report it. We just did a best management practices for our Aquafor permit, which allows for that and gives a list of all the stuff stored on-site currently that we plan to, but that will change as time goes on. And it's a, we have to do a monthly, a weekly check and keep a log, and I guess if there's any major change, I'm not sure exactly how the major change works, if we, Pat, you know.
Sir, you're going to have to, sorry, got to come up.
Pat Lafayette, I'm an independent consultant, but at the present time, I'm working full-time for Peter to make his move. He has both a hazardous waste and a stormwater pollution prevention plan. The stormwater plan is once a year sampling and testing. The hazardous waste plan is OSHA managed, OSHA regulated. He meets all the requirements of the government. All the hazardous materials are stored in properly constructed rooms or cabinets for small amounts that are at a work location. So he's under the guidance of the government.
Thank you.
Shouldn't he be sworn if he's working for Mr.?
Oh, it's-
Everything I just said? Yeah.
I just think from procedural, because when somebody comes to call the council for expert witness, so they're working for somebody, it's-
Sure.
Lisa, Lisa.
Would you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear with the testimony you just gave and any other testimony you might give, that you're going to reveal the whole truth and I think about the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you, Lisa.
Anything else?
Any other questions?
Okay.
Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak? Yes.
Hi, my name is Richard Mann. I'm property owner on the side of this property. It's a, I wrote down a couple of things, and some- It's a, I wrote down a couple of things, and some of them were already answered with the testimony from the other people, but I'll read what I have just by. To keep the property zone special use, this would allow LBI and their tenants to be able to use the property as their intended use provided it is in concurrence with the town's outlined intended master plan. I spoke with Peter, and he sounded very good with what he said, and we had an appointment to meet, which he did not keep, perhaps an oversight on his part. Chase Hill Road is one of the few beautiful untouched natural scenic areas along the Parkett River, that our townspeople and visitors take great pride in living in. And also driving through this area, I would really hate to see it turn into a manufacturing zone and look like, it's like the area's LBI's and now, and Shabbat's and other areas. Over the last 10 years, Garrity had very few employees, and that property has always been quiet and neat. The town has special use regulations in their books now for such situations. Let's use them. Turning this area into manufacturing intestine creates many unknown things that can grow out of control if we are not very careful, especially fiberglass, it's extremely harmful to its workers, air, soil, and water. The sewer system is not designed to handle any such byproducts that leaches into the earth just over the wetlands. There's always been a very neat and quiet atmosphere on that property. We should not allow outside storage of any kind. The parking lot lights should be like Robellos, which the town really liked. The property Ray Quillen built is a wonderful setup, does not interfere with anyone, and the town did not give into any concessions. LBI and the town council feel there's no need for a traffic study. I was told there was one done 10 years ago, and one was done, and the outcome of it was to put a light at the intersection of Chase Hill and Route 3, to cut the guardrail back and to widen the swing, for there had been numerous accidents there. Tractor trailers cannot safely make a right-hand turn. 10 years ago, I used to live on Route 3 across from Crandall's Field, I rollerbladed down that road daily. There's way too much traffic to even consider that now, so we really need to have a current traffic study. In closing, all I'm asking is that LBI and their tenants, who want to use this property, to just satisfy the town and its people, that we will ensure to protect and preserve it, as the town has always stressed its importance to the people of Hopkinton.
Thank you. Would you like to give that to the clerk for the record, or do you want to keep that?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Yes.
There were some good points brought out, I think we were going with the hazardous materials.
On-site, sorry.
There were some good points brought out with the hazardous materials, some people spoke. With the materials that you would store on-site to build your products, and who produced you, do your manufacturing, what would they present in terms of, in the case of a fire, hazardous materials? Similar hazardous plans that you guys talked about in other communities such as Quonset, well, just throw that out as a big one, they have the full-time fire department and their response, and the whole thing. Here, it's volunteer. Would there be something there that would cause a problem with the volunteer nature of it, or there really be nothing? Just touching that whole?
We are proposing, this is part of the aquifer protection, that the old oil, there's an oil tank containment building, which contains 20,000 gallons, and we are going to convert that, so most of all the flammable, we have mostly organic chemicals, some resin, solvents, and that sort of thing, that's the bulk of what we have. They are, some of them are flammable, some are not, and that spill containment, I don't think, I think the amount we have is so far below the containment of that building, and it's not connected to the building. If there was a fire on that thing, I think you would contain it and let it burn. I don't think you would do anything about it, and that's what, I am a fire commissioner in Poughkeepsie Bridge in Groton, which is the largest district in Groton, and, you know, very familiar with this sort of these procedures, so it's important that the firefighters have that information so they can respond to it appropriately. One other correction, Pat said that we, hazardous waste, we are not a hazardous waste generator, we have hazardous material, which would be flammable and that sort of thing, and so that's, you know, basically, basically it. By the way, I was there from 10 to 1, and I said I'd be there from 10 to 12, you didn't show up.
Is there anyone else that would like to come up? Yes, sir, and then you after.
Hi, my name is Stephen Mack, I live at 79 Chase Hill Road. I have known Peter Legnos for 35 years, I like him. I've been to his company, checked it out, but not for this purpose. I don't see any problem with that fitting into this format. So I essentially, being within earshot of where Peter is, I'm at the top of Chase Hill Road, and if you drop a bottle loudly there, I will hear it in my bedroom window, especially if you do it at 5:00 AM. I don't have any issues with Peter being there, or his business being there, but I do have some issues. And some of them, my essential issue has to do with the change in zoning and how that relates to the town, as I understand it, not being able to regulate to a degree once it's moved into a manufacturing zone. Am I right so far? Is that correct?
Follow your thinking.
Okay. What's important is that, what's important, starting on the larger scale, is the town of Hopkinton. The town of Hopkinton, I have been enormously proud, has, what they have done at Route 95 and Route 3, to me is just wonderful, especially out in the countryside, where we live, where people haven't, many people that live in our area haven't seen sprawl and what happens, and haven't been familiar yet. They've had the wisdom to limit the kinds of industries that came in as low-impact industries, and done a spectacular job against, I'm sure, a lot of pressure from people that bought land, thinking that they could do otherwise, and have, really, as a town, I think that this town's really held its own, and I'm happy and proud for that. The site on Chase Hill Road is in the town of Hopkinton, it is in a residential area, and while the consultant said it's surrounded by undeveloped land, that is true for a distance, but not farther than earshot. So it really is a residential area without what at one time was a special-use property. My feeling is that the future of the site, in the long term, is what's paramount. So Peter, who I hope does brilliantly and expands enormously, may, for reasons, grow out of that site, and if so, and if that's his advantage, hopefully quickly. And then, if you make a zoning change, the next person that addresses that site is going to have a zoning situation, as I understand it, correct me if I'm wrong, you will not have control over, because they'll be able to do, within the permitted area in the aquifer scenario, anything they want to do. So this meeting, within reason, will not happen again, and I think that that's a major mistake on the part of the town. Unless I'm misunderstanding this, I'm not studies up, studied up as much as I should be, I say that, but I think that that's a major issue, that is my major issue with this whole scenario. I think that the town needs to be able to keep control of these sites in the town to retain the character of the town. The simple things that run off of that are, the traffic consideration is verbal, it's not written. The things that are verbal are verbal, they take place in a meeting, but they're, we're not locked into those things. Peter knows pretty much what his traffic's gonna be, but he doesn't know for a fact who his tenant's going to be. He has a tenant he wishes to work with, that he likes, that I think, according to him, works with the kind of security clearances that they have to do what they do. But who knows what that person will do? And who knows what the next person will do? So in the long run, what will the eventual traffic be? Nobody knows. So I think it's incumbent upon the town to take the unknowns into consideration and address those issues now, not just for the sake of the town and the residents of Chase Hill Road, but for the sake of Peter, who, when he owns that building, has, will have a space that he can move in, and he needs to know, I think, before he purchases that building, where his leeways are. And we don't, the last thing we want to have happen is for something to have happened that we don't like, but now we can't do anything about it, now it's an issue. So I think it's a really critical issue. It was brought up a bit earlier, that with regard to the tenants, that the aquifer permit would somehow regulate that, but it won't. The aquifer permit relates solely to protecting the aquifer, aquifers, it doesn't have to do with traffic, or noise, or anything else. Now, Peter's in charge right now, but that's now. So I really think that this is something that we should think about. I think that if it requires a little bit more time on the town's part to review this, and to see what we can do in a, if you agree with me, to customize or to review the idea of keeping control of the site, so it doesn't turn into something unlike what you've already done for the town, I think it would very much be worth that time, and that's my thinking.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I wanted to point out that you brought up the aquifer protection permit. There are actually a couple, there, back when, back when this prop, this particular site ended up becoming a manufacturing special in the 80s, 88, sometime in the 80s.
I was there.
We didn't, okay, we didn't have, we didn't have the zoning, we didn't have the district use table, we didn't have zoning that we have now, we didn't have aquifer protection, we didn't have primary zones, secondary zones, we didn't have welfare, I mean, wellhead protection, we didn't have any of those things. So back then, councils really did need to, in some instances, put special circumstances on property. As it turned out, it was called MS, manufacturing special, but there wasn't really anything. All it was is, if anything changes, you're gonna have to go to the council. So that was basically what the use, what it was. But since then, a lot of things have changed, and while one of them is a thing where the town, I disagree, the town does have control, and has control, as you mentioned, the aquifer protection ordinance, but also has another way to control it, and that's the planning board. So anybody, the planning board, anybody who is going to, let's suppose something happens, and like you said, his business explodes, and he needs to move to another site, someone else is gonna come in, we don't know who that is, we do know that whoever they are will have to go to the planning board, whoever they are will have to go to the zoning board. So we do have some control, but we, they don't have to come to the council anymore, so you're right on that. Anything also?
Well, some of those have special use permits, too. If you go through the zoning ordinance, they, even though it's a manufacturing zone, there are still areas that require a special use permit in order to bring that into a manufacturing zone. Everything is not just carte blanche, so there are still protections within the zoning ordinance itself, if you happen to look at those.
Is there, would you like to come up again?
Please. So then may I ask, do you think that this zoning change and this use conforms with the regulations that you have on the other recently installed low-impact manufacturing businesses that you have up here on Route 3?
State that, the question again?
Does the, does this, does this zoning change for this particular building, is it parallel with the zoning changes that are in effect for the structures that are up on Route 3 near Route 95? There is a structure with a berm and pine trees on the top, these low-impact, is this the exact same thing, or is it broader, smaller, what, how would you characterize that?
Everyone's, they're the same.
The manufacturing zone is exactly...
It's the same zoning?
Yes, the manufacturing zoning is identical, so it's all, all the same as what you see up here, as what it would be down there.
So then, go ahead.
I was gonna say, actually, I think LBI is coming in much smaller, because even in high-tech profiles, we have Spicer Gas, we have a huge gas tank there, which is very hazardous. So they actually have other things they have done that have been even more intense than LBI. As a matter of fact, they're coming in really under, I think, under the radar, they're coming in really with soft things. Your point that you don't know what's going to come in after that, even with high-tech, when they came in with some bigger problem areas, like a gas company is problematic. The planning board was able to handle that very well, make sure it was contained, make sure the aquifer permits worked. So I think that we do have those protections in place that weren't there before, not to mention we have active citizens who get very fussy when something comes in that shouldn't be there, which we have seen in any number of ways in Hopkinton, and have prevented many things that other people have wanted. So I think that our motto is still in good shape.
Then, a last point, I think, has to do with the traffic. The traffic scenario, which is not really traffic, let me say, the safety factor, when you're coming down Chase Hill Road and come into Route 3, the circum, there's a circumstance there, which, this is broader than just LBJ, but as you come up to the rise there, you do not have line of sight to the left. Now, I had the director of the highway department, what is that, the?
Public Works.
Public Works, quite a few years ago, came down, through some efforts that I made to come and look at the site with an entourage of people that he works with, to talk about that, and they made some changes there, but not adequate, it's very dangerous. Now, when you look to the left, it is the underbranches to the left, and this would affect people as central as Peter himself trying to get out of there, or any one of us. When you look to the left, if somebody's rocketing down the road there, as I just missed the end of my days with a teenager or a year or two older, quite a few years ago, by about that much, cranking along around 75 or 80, you can't see them coming in time. The lower branches are at issue, not the trees. When I talked to the, to the fellows from the state, he said, "Oh my God," because he'd been doing it for a while, and I'm sure that was the state of things with him, he said, "Oh my God, the environmentalists, they'll go crazy because it's a flyway." Okay, so, but I think the lower branches are an issue, and I think that that's an important issue. If he has employees, it increases the traffic, actually, it's an important issue for all of us. I think that's something that, one way or another, needs to be addressed. I realize it isn't entirely for this by any means, but it's important, and I think the other thing that Rick brings up is absolutely true. After 35 years on Chase Hill Road, I have seen that guardrail to the right get crumpled up so many times, and they come back and replace it, and then they cut it back a few stanchions, and then they come back and replace it, and it's a really lousy turn. Now, to fix it, I think, the only thing you can do is raise the plane of Chase Hill Road as you approach it, which is a really big job, and then you're dropping off into camolies, and I don't know what to do. But one way or another, if we're going to have an active business there again, with tractor-trailer trucks, no matter how expensive the contents are, there's tractor-trailer trucks, it's just the way things get moved. I think it's something that needs to be addressed, and it's a pain in the neck, because it isn't easy for anybody. So I, do you have, I don't know if it's appropriate for me to ask if you have any thoughts on that, maybe I don't, I'm not allowed to ask things like that. But I mean, how do we address that?
Sounds to me it's something that we can give to Bill McGarry, and Public Works can take a look at it.
Yeah, I mean, it's tough.
Especially the lower branches, we may not be able to redesign the road, but we certainly might be able to cut some of the branches.
They belong to Westerly.
Oh, great. I'm sure we can discuss. Yeah, it's a state, it's a state issue, and it's another town, but it's still a problem.
They're friendly.
Absolutely.
Okay, all right.
And if we pay for the work, they might actually...
Right, thanks so much.
Oh, I'm sorry, I meant the gentleman back there, either one of you can go up. Oh, oh, you guys are related, huh?
John Donahue, 38 Chase Hill Road. My parents and I are your budding property owners to the west, okay, probably your closest neighbors. No one asked this question, what will the hours of operation be? And I guess, if this is granted, and there is an issue, how accessible will you be to your neighbors? Thank you.
Thank you.
Our standard hours of operation are basically 8:00 to 4:30, although we often start at 7:00 and work a little bit later, so we might work, you know, if we have a big rush, we might work till 8 o'clock at night, or 7:30, or something like that. We're basically a daytime operation, and I will be working on-site there, and I'm accessible. Give you my cellphone, you can call me anytime, I'm that kind of person, so, yeah, it's just easier to talk than it is to avoid people. I mean, they're really... I mean, they're really, you know, and I'd like to work on that corner there, 32, I volunteer for that.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Yes, sir.
John Donahue, 38 Chase Hill Road. I'd just like, if you could answer your question, you talked about the open space and the public access to that property, I don't understand what you're actually meaning, okay.
Can I walk over there? Point. The building is here, and this area is the manufacturing zone, manufacturing special zone that needs to be changed. And this area is all residential along the river here. And there's a great deal of wetlands on here, there's some possibly usable land here, but not a lot of it. So I would think that access to the river anywhere along here, we can never really know, we can't really develop or use it anyway, so it really ought to be used for public access. And my initial thoughts, but I'm not an expert on this deeply, but there's a right-of-way for near-gans electric right-of-way, it could get back there, it could be a parking area or something down here. It's beautiful.
I've lived there all my life, and that against a way goes to the river. And they had it open at one time for years, and people went down there and used it, and all they could do was make a mess. And they finally locked it off.
Oh, really? Well, I think that...
And that's the problem with the...
If there was an area where there was parking for that, and otherwise, that we could put some barrels and...
You don't, you've probably been down there.
Many a times.
They make a mess down there.
Are we sure?
Nope.
That's the only concern I have, because I've seen it, nobody hears.
Yeah, now, I understand, well, I picked up after all. But this, it's, you know, all this is really nice along.
Like, you keep it that way.
Well, I guess, but if no one can see it, we can make those. We've got to figure out a way, right?
Give you the land trust would be a good candidate.
Land Trust or the WPA, the WPWA, because they actually build those parking areas, and the putting in the canoes. And if they could also then take care of it, because it would be through the land trust conservation, and the Wood River Pocatuck Watershed Association. But you're right, it needs to have someone who oversees it, it's not just a dead parking area.
Isn't there something that doesn't require maintenance?
Probably, well, no.
I'm Connie Donahue, and I obviously live in 38 Chase Hill.
Would you come up to the microphone, please?
Sure. I walk around that mill all the time now, because it's nothing there. And I see, as you probably have, they've left a gas grill, they've left furniture, some landscapers has dumped whatever. And I get very aggravated about stuff on Chase Hill. And I think wherever you have people who have public access like that, they don't live there, so they don't care. And it's very aggravating to me to see along Chase Hill, all the garbage. I mean, I pick it up all the time, but obviously, you know, it just is a concern that if you don't have any control over that.
Excuse me, ma'am, and you're Mrs. Man, I assume?
No, Mrs. Donahue.
Excuse me, I mean Mrs. Donahue, excuse me. Okay, for the record, Mrs. Donahue. Yes, sir.
Those are very hard questions to answer. But I think that if there were a land trust, that somebody who is involved with maintaining it as part of the whole effort, that would be probably useful, and would stand a chance of success.
Yes, sir, you want to come back up?
Hi, I had two issues. It's, this lady mentioned about the gas tank out the Spicer. I was at that meeting, and Spicer and their lawyers and all that were saying how safe it was, and the council was saying it's how hazardous it is. And I came up and I spoke, because my mom's house blew up with a small gas tank, and she died. So I was like, I couldn't believe that Spicer and their people let us all believe it's not harmful, yet we know it is. That's what I'm saying, Steve said it very well, how we just can't blow this out of proportion. And I own all that land on the other side in there against a way, except for two acres. And I've been working there against the electric to get control of that road. And then I came to the town to build one other lot there, and there's a big deed construency where that road is deeded to the people that live there. And then, so LBI does not have access to go down there. And to use it as a public parking place where people can just go leave grills and party and all that stuff, it's, that would be a detriment to all my property down there. And that's why, to have them have his 38 employees, or 17 more, and to, if he needs 5,000 feet to do fiberglass work and resin work, I don't have a problem with that. I just have a problem with this turning into, you know, it's like, we're just going to do this, but once you open the door into manufacturing, it's going to just get blown out of proportion. And I own businesses in North Kingston, and then Home Depot tried building, and it's like, then Walmart was able to, then Staples is there, and then all these buildings went up. My taxes never went down. It's, so having a tenant coming in from Branton could be a great thing, but I'm sure you don't want me come here and say, "I want to develop my 80 acres," because I have 500 tenants out from Norwich that want low-income housing. It would take away from what Hopkinton's all about. And I pay big taxes in Hopkinton to keep it rural. And Chase Hill Road, you know, all those stone walls and the river, do we really want a mill there? You know, it's like, please consider what you want to grant.
Thank you.
So I'm asking.
Is there, you would like to come up?
Yeah, if I could just add one point of clarification. Brad Ward, building and zoning official, town of Hopkinton. I want everyone to know that this zone change is not going to be just manufacturing. Right now, it is manufacturing special. It's going from manufacturing special to manufacturing. And the difference between those two is that in November 1st, 1988, the zone change went from RFR 80 to manufacturing special. The special portion of the manufacturing zone is four conditions. Those four conditions are, number one, if the use as it currently exists is discontinued, or if a new owner wishes to change the use from its current use to another, a change of use permit will be required from the council. This mechanism can't be accomplished. There are no provisions installed by the council to obtain a change of use permit, so it's archaic. Number two, the planning board shall have final approval of any plans for the proposed expansion of a building or parking area. As Mr. Nardum specified earlier, this is a requirement of development plan review for any commercial zoning district or manufacturing. Number three, the CNA should notify the town council if any new classes of chemicals, dyes, or processes are to be introduced, or prove that the waste treatment will be inadequate not to cause pollution. This aspect is scrutinized indepthly at aquifer protection. Number four, the CNA will provide, in consultation with the town solicitor, a conservation easement or similar mechanism for ensuring that no development will occur within 300 feet of the entire property line bordering the river, as shown on that certain map. Mr. Legnos wants to provide and work with the town to provide open space, or what's ever required of all that land that wasn't in contesting as far as item number four land. Therefore, the only thing that this is doing is removing four archaic conditions. He is still entitled, once he meets these conditions, to have any permitted use as it occurs down at High Tech, and all the other new things that you mentioned, sir, and I'm sorry, I don't know your name. Okay. So that's essentially all that this is doing. It's just removing four conditions that no longer are applicable, and are highly scrutinized by other town boards and other public hearings within the town.
Can I ask Ken a question?
Thank you, Brad. Scott, you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question for Mr. Ward.
Oh, please, I'm sorry, I didn't mean disappear. Thank you.
Obviously, these, you're always interested, when you're on the council, to set precedents, and to be fair to all applicants, and try to cover all the bases. Two things, I remember that property, and I've lived in town all my life, that was Warner Brothers in the 60s, and, so that's been around at least since the 1960s. I know there's a sentiment in town about having dark skies, about lighting. Do you see any concern about that being an issue at that site? And the other thing I would ask you is, do you think there's anything that we should have in writing? Is there any omissions in the ordinances that we should put in writing to protect the interests of the town, in your professional opinion as our building and zoning official?
With relation to the dark sky ordinance, Mr. Legnos has already indicated here under oath that he will, as far as any lighting replacement goes, be in compliance with our dark sky lighting. So I have to take him at his word there, and I'm sure that he will follow that, those constraints. As far as putting any additional concerns in writing, that's really not a question for me, it's, I hate to say, it's more a question for Ms. Buckley back there. I'm not, I really wouldn't know how to put the appropriate limitations on to be in compliance with the law.
Well, I apologize for putting you into that position of answering that question, but at the same time, you are the one that does the enforcement, so you do have, you're at the other end, the solicitor gives us advice, but also the zoning and building official does the actual enforcement. So your perspective is welcome by this councilman, thank you.
I believe that there'll be no problems with enforcement issues on LBI, had visited their site as well, and I believe that they'll be fully compliant with all aquifer protection permits, and a very good steward of the environment, from what I observed in their operation down in New Haven.
Thank you, Mr. Ward.
Was there anyone else, is there anyone who hasn't spoken that would like to speak? Okay, is there anyone who wants to come back up? Yes, sir.
I know this is a bit off the subject, but we've gotten off on the subject of electric right-of-way road, and possibly a public access development down there. Over the last 35 years, then, probably long before I came to this area, that road has been an unspoken designated dumping zone. And everybody who lives around here knows that. It's couches, it's people that are hunting deer, leave deer carcasses along the road that they pull out, that's a fact of life, beds, anything. And I've actually caught a couple of people, I dug, spent an hour digging through somebody's garbage one day on Chase Hill Road, and found their address in there on their child's homework. So I had to come and clean it up, and it's not much fun. So I think it's, I think that's, to find an entity that's going to keep people from doing that, and put access down there in a place that's very unmonitored, great place for parking, drinking beer, I think that's what's going on down there, that kind of stuff down in the area. People put canoes in, it's been really tough. So I, for my own part, would be not opposed to the idea in another area, but in that particular area, I think it's inadvisable, and it would be better, as Rick says, to just keep it as low-key, to some, I don't know, to address unfortunately how less people going down there, rather than more, just throwing in my two cents.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Okay, thank you very much.
I think the attorney.
Oh, come back up.
I'd like to be last.
Good.
With respect to the comments tonight from the general public and the butters, I think that Peter has indicated his willingness to be available and address the concerns, and based upon my experience with him, none of you should doubt that. None of you should doubt that, that Peter will be available, he'll address your concerns, and he will give you his cellphone number, he said he would. As to the issue of open space, I didn't want to leave anyone with the impression that we were just going to do that, to just create something, create some public access, we don't have any rights to use that near-gans way, any more than anyone else does, we wouldn't presume that, and we certainly wouldn't create an area to access that, to make that river accessible to the public, unless it was in concert with either your land trust, or the Conservation Commission, or the planning board. So we're, we've talked about the possibility of offering some or all of the remaining land for that type of purpose, but it's not in our firm plan, and again, we would not do that without total cooperation, consultation, and partnership with the town and the appropriate agencies. So I think the, to allay that concern that it's going to be a free-for-all down there, please don't leave with that impression, it won't happen. I think the, in summary, the expert testimony that you've heard this evening indicates that a couple of things that are germane to the rezone. One, that the changing of the zone from manufacturing special to manufacturing will not have an adverse effect on the values of the surrounding properties. The proposal is consistent with, and in compliance with, your comprehensive plan and the future land use maps. The Rhode Island Economic Development Corporation, I think it's safe to say, is excited about this possibility. And I believe that the town of Hopkinton should be as well, and I think that you are. This corporation will provide high-quality, high-paying jobs, and again, I think it's a feather in the cap of Hopkinton to be a participant in this. LBI, despite the fact that they have received all, if not all, most if not all of the required approvals to expand where they are, have chosen to make Hopkinton the site of their next phase of expansion and success. And we would ask the council to act favorably on that application and grant the rezone. Thank you.
Is there a motion? A motion to close the hearing and set a date for a decision?
Could I just ask you to close the hearing, subject to Mr. Nardum's providing of the owners?
A motion to close...
Yes, and that will be provided probably by week's end.
I make a motion to close the hearing, subject to Mr. Nardum's signatures of the owners.
Seconded.
And set a date for a decision. All right, there's been a motion and a second by Tom. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Now, a date.
Your next town council meeting is October 17.
My anniversary. I won't be here. Can you get all the... Okay, it'll have to go to the first meeting in November.
It's the 7th, which we have the Spicer marketplace on.
And you'll also have your renewals of the cooling and...
That's under license, supposed to be...
We've got to get this, you know, we've got to take care of our business, yeah.
November 7.
All right, November 7. That, was that getting a little late for you?
It's, I'm out of state that week.
Well, it's for the council to make a decision that night, so...
I understand.
There's no more discussion from the public, strictly from the council.
Right, the hearing's closed, so if you're not there, you just don't get to hear what our decision is.
He'll give you his cellphone.
It's going to be back and forth.
The only other meeting is, I assume the other meeting after 17?
Yes, it's the first meeting after the 17. Right, yeah. All right, thank you very much, everyone, for attending tonight. All right. Um, thank you very much, everyone, for, for attending tonight.
Thank you.
Uh, we'll have a couple of minute recess while, uh, while everyone leaves. Tom was trying to get in there to make that, uh, motion for the hearing, so you can continue. I didn't continue. I know you didn't. I know you didn't. But you have happened. Oh, you were, you were. I'm doing it when, I do it when there's lots of, if there's lots of problems. This is not. We're gonna need you to, like, leave because we got our council meeting.
Unless you want to stay.
I mean, you can talk outside.
Mrs. Donnie Hugh, good seeing you again.
All right.
Oh, my goodness.
Stress.
I thought that was a stress thing. Oh, no, that's the star. Hi, where is he?
Man, she must drink a lot of water before he gets in here.
There he comes. Come on, Scott.
He's not gonna leave. Please, we've gotta finish our meeting. It's nice to, oh, it's raining out. That's why they don't want to go out.
Oh, yes, it's pouring out.
I think it's still raining. All right. All right. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda.
I'm gonna poll September 6th.
September 6th?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I have a problem with that myself.
Okay, is there anything else to poll?
No. A motion to approve town council meeting minutes of September 19th, 2011, set October 17th, 2011 as a hearing date for a commercial hauler's license filed by Joseph DiNagro for Patriot Disposal Company, except the following reports tax collector, which includes adjustments.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, September 6 minutes. Page two.
Page two?
Page two. In favor and opposed are reversed.
I'm going to, uh, I'd like to have these, uh, not voted on tonight because, uh, there's a statement in there. I suggested that be told in northern part of, of the state. And I want to make sure, listening to the tape, whether I said that correctly. I think I said-
Wait, 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 wait. Okay. So what page are you on? You have to give us a page, Scott.
Page nine.
Is it page nine? Yeah, I, I'd rather, uh, me not vote on them because I want to make sure I get it right. Uh, it says here, he suggests that toll booths be placed further north because of higher population, more vehicle traffic. He say we'd like the town council manager knowledgeable to keep the price of the situation. Uh, I just want to check exactly what I said. I did say that'd be probably better in the north, but I don't think I endorse that idea. I just said it would seem logical. I just like to make sure that I, I'm quoting it.
He suggested toll booths be placed in another location.
Um, because he said further north, um, how about just, he suggested toll booths be placed-
Northern end of the state. Yeah, but I don't know if I said that. I suggested it would make more sense, but I don't know if I actually-
Well, I guess, Scott, the best thing to do is to listen to that tape and find out what you did say. Okay. Yeah, yeah. So we'll put those for the next meeting. Okay. That's fine.
And I, and I might be wrong on that because a lot of times you can't remember everything you say literally, you know? Because I don't want to be hung for saying that I support tolls in the northern part of the state. I didn't exactly-
I think that's what you said.
There's not anything wrong with that either.
No, and I actually think I said part of that.
It's better than the southern part.
And I might have said that, you know?
Okay. Okay. Uh, onto our first public forum, but we've lost our public.
Did we, uh, vote?
Well, there's nothing to, we did vote. We voted on the consent agenda. Okay, public. Anyway, um,
Wow, the public left.
Our manager. Our newest American is sitting over there. Okay. Um, and the town manager, uh, we, it was just on there just in case. And, um, he will give us a report at our next meeting, no doubt. Uh, old business, the 2011 community development block grant. All I wanted to do was announce that we are going to receive the following. Crandall House, $40,000. Warm employment, $9,500. Welcome house for operating is $2,500. Housing information program, $1,500. Washington County CDC for $4,000. Community land trust, housing land trust is $2,000. And of course, administration's is $5,000.
What's that total up to?
Uh, $64,500.
Uh, the 225,000.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it, it fluctuates. It, it really does fluctuate.
It just keeps going down.
Well, next year, it'll, you'll see repair on here because we'll, if we use up things, then you get more. So anyway, that's all I wanted to do. Uh, new business. Um, I'm gonna turn this over to Bill. It's the tip program.
Thank you. Uh, with respect to this agenda item, um, the council president placed this on the agenda at my request. And basically, um, I would respectfully request that the council consider scheduling a public hearing, uh, for October 17th, uh, to consider the town's, uh, transportation improvement program. The state planning, um, in, in Providence, Department of Administration, requires that a public hearing be held before they'll accept any applications, uh, from cities and towns throughout the state. Uh, this morning, I attended an orientation session in Providence at the Department of Administration with respect to the tips program. Uh, they had two today, uh, one this morning and one this evening. And it was for city and town representatives as to how they develop their individual, uh, transportation improvement programs on a municipal level. Uh, very basically, the, uh, last, they do it every four years, and it's a three-year program. From 2009 to 2012, uh, the average was approximately, uh, $210 million per year. Uh, now it's going to be decreased by 24% to an average of $160 million per year. There are some major projects, uh, that are already in the pipeline. And out of that 160 million, uh, the Secana River Bridge, which in itself is about $80 million. Uh, Providence Viaduct, uh, which is opposite the mall, the, the Pawtucket River Bridge, uh, between, uh, right as the exit to go off to Memorial Hospital. Uh, certainly those, just those three projects themselves, uh, are going to consume a considerable amount of money. And that's not even including the debt service that goes along with it. So we don't anticipate-
They don't need the toll booths then.
So we don't anticipate, um, a lot of money coming our way. However, we really need to be prepared. We have, uh, three projects from 2009 to 2012. One has been completed, and that's Bridge Street, uh, the one they've been working on for two or three years. And there are, uh, two others, uh, that we plan to continue. Um, what we would like to do is sit down with, uh, the town planner and, um, also with the DPW director and fill out the paperwork for the state roads that we feel, uh, in town, that we feel, uh, are, those deserving of, uh, repair and, and, uh, receiving federal funds. And then to schedule a public hearing and bring that before the council. And if they wish to, uh, add some more or delete some or to amend them, and also to get some public input. One of the problems, as always, is time constraints. Uh, today was the day of the orientation session. All applications are due by Friday, October 28th, at statewide planning.
Oh, boy.
So we have to move in a hurry. And because they do require a public hearing, uh, we would respectfully request that we schedule one now for the 17th. And between now and then, we can put together, uh, certain proposals for applications, God bless you, uh, for the different roads in town, and then discuss them, uh, at the public hearing on the 17th. And that's our request at this point.
Okay, that's fine. Um, go ahead, Scott.
I know.
And we'll just swing by.
Well, I will just say two things, and I don't, because obviously you've got some priorities. Number one, for many years, I've been concerned about the Laurel Street, which is technically a state road.
Oh, wait a minute. If we're gonna get into what it is we need to do, we should do that at the hearing.
Yes.
We don't, we shouldn't really get into that now. We should do it at the hearing. You just gotta, like, a general, we don't want to get into specific projects because we'll do that on the 17th.
I would then, a general statement, uh, some of the state roads that are particularly have needed work for quite a few years. I'm also concerned about some drainage issues, but I'll stop by and talk to you.
Tom?
Bill, this is strictly for state roads, not for local, right?
Yes.
Barbara? When we're discussing the transportation improvement program, um, I know we're not discussing specific roads, but we are, having come back up through planning, is the Potterhill Mill, which is westerly. And we own all the roads going there. Two of them belong to us and one belongs to the state. And if they're going to renovate Potterhill, Westerly needs to work with us to take care of Laurel, which is a state road. It's an ongoing issue and it's going to be coming up again. I just wanted to let you know that. I know Die Hill is very important.
Well, that's, that's a town road.
I know, I will. Darn.
Frank?
Yeah. Hi, Bill. Um, you mentioned the three projects from 2009 to 2012. You said Bridge Street was one of the other two?
Bridge Street's done. That's all set. Looks great. Yeah, I've got them here. Just curious. Uh, there are three project, uh, three projects. The first one is the Wood River Bridge, number 261. Uh, and I checked with, uh, DPW, who checked with the, uh, Hope Valley State Garage. And basically, that's the bridge by the chemical company on Route 91, the abandoned chemical.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Charvins. That's that bridge there. And the current status is, it's in design at a 90% rate, and it's non-prioritized by the state. The funding for that is $210,000. The second, uh, project is, uh, Bridge Street. That's recently been completed.
Completed, yep.
Yes. And the third one is drainage improvements under a traffic safety program as opposed to a bridge program. And, uh, for the town of Hopkinton, it's Mechanic Street. Uh, and it's currently, uh, they have it listed as substantially completed and, and under construction, non-prioritized. I know that these three, uh, projects were recently reviewed by statewide planning and DOT, and they should be, uh, they should be rather current. So those are the three projects that were submitted, uh, from 2009 to 2012. Our job is to make sure that they are completed. If they're not completed, uh, we can continue them on the 2013 to 2016 to make sure that they get done. And then add the new ones, uh, that, uh, that we feel are needed.
Okay, great. Thanks, Bill.
Okay, we're all set on that? Okay. Uh, last public forum? Public's still gone. They left us. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.